Call the meeting to order here now at six oh two with the roll call.
Sue Erickson.
Here.
Ken May.
Here.
Joel Newman.
Here.
Sean Burto.
Here.
Ray Conley.
Here.
Outstanding, uh, Mark Estram is on a fire call right now, so we may see him, we may not see him, it's a fire call somewhere in Polk County. So, second item on the agenda is our consent agenda, um, the approval of our agenda for tonight, the approval of the expenditures, the approval in place on file, the minutes of the meeting that we just had on June the tenth. And we'll entertain a motion when anybody's ready. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Ken, all those in favor?
I think.
Anybody staying? Nope. Alright, so number three, we have our citizens forum here, um, I just want to make a couple of quick brief comments. We limit comments, talk time to three minutes, we'll try to manage that best we can, but we also as a small town, try to give everybody the opportunity to get their developed thought out. Um, I would also ask too, I know there's probably people in the audience here regarding, um, one of our new business agenda items regarding the Dollar General. I would ask, um, if you have to run and leave and you want to throw a comment out, I understand, but I would ask, maybe we wait until we get to that agenda item so that we can hear from, um, the property owner and the conversation about the why and what they'd like to do before maybe we get into all our, all public comments about it. So, uh, I have a list here of folks and if, uh, I see some subjects on here, so if you need to go, I have Kelly on here first. You'll wait, perfect Kelly, okay, um, I have a John Fattino. Are you same topic? Okay, alright, um, Kyra. Finally. Related to.
Yes.
Another council member.
I will ask on three or four, 10th Avenue. Talking tonight about online concerns about soon. Uh, since the fourth time that I've come to the council with the same topic. I, I realize I talk to people for a living and that doesn't make me nervous at all, but this makes me nervous because I'm angry. Because it smells awful at my house, I can't open my windows, I can't go outside without having to deal with the stench. I can't invite people over to do things in my backyard and what's really bothering me right now is it feels like there's not much movement here with this council to get to an action that gets a permanent solution in the problem. I've asked in my prior two times of talking to you for you to find the problem, to seek out an engineered solution. I think Mark has tried all of the least invasive tricks or at least a number of them, trying to find that there's a lower cost, easy fix, none of those appear to be working and I need, I think other people in this audience are here for the same reason, I, I need some action from this council in moving in a direction that is more invasive, that is more permanent, that gets outside experts in here to figure out what the problem is and figure out how to fix it. It's been fifteen months or so since you've been online. Like I said, this is my third time here in those fifteen months. I really need the council to up its level of responsibility for fixing my issue. So, I think there are other people that may or may not talk, if you're here for the same reason, if you want to raise your hand, um, there's a bunch of us here and we are hugely impacted more than anyone else in this town because it's a reminder of sun that that, so please figure out what to move on, um, and I don't want anyone to think that I'm disparaging Mark and his efforts. I don't expect him to be able to fix a problem that the engineers didn't anticipate to begin with. I think he's trying to try and just think about the well.
Uh, Keith Hedlund, I have you next, I saw you back there. Uh, I think so, but maybe you forgot your comment, maybe you changed your mind on your comment, that's not about. Alright. No problem at all, we'll at least know you were here.
Alright.
Uh, BB, I assume, Brian Brennland, you're with, okay, hold on, okay, uh, Lori Morrissey.
Lori Morrissey, I was on Penn Street too and I did want to comment that, uh, you know, it does smell and I don't want it to get as bad as it did last year because, um, that, that was pretty bad. We used to get it just once or twice a year when it turned or whatever and, um, now it seems like we've had it, you know, about every night. And I don't know if it's been so windy, if that's making a difference or what's making a difference with that. And so, uh, I can't really say anything other than what Kyra said, uh, and the other comment I had was, uh, we still have speakers so bad at Tenth and Land, both northbound and southbound, I mean, I'm guessing our average speed is in forty miles an hour range, but we'll get some of the trucks and the semis doing forty-five and fifty and there's absolutely no way in the world they could ever get stopped for a child or anything else that comes out on the road. So, uh, and we are getting more bicyclists now too, so, uh, I know they put a damper on the, um, the
Yeah.
For the, the ticketing, I'm scared that, but somehow we need to use some before somebody gets hurt, so, uh, you know, my husband drives a trailer, a lot of it, or a truck with a trailer, brakes a trailer around and he's probably been almost hit dozens of times and, uh, and we, we want to go and almost hit him, they lay on the horn. I mean, we live here and so we're just pulling it out back and, uh, and it's just getting kind of dangerous, so wanted you to know.
Thank you Lori, and I, I'll touch on that when I give an update, uh, later, just the speed camera thing. Uh, Suzie Hawk, I saw your, you put a purpose, you'll wait, that's okay, okay, Tim Davis.
Real quick there, uh, I'll start out, I love Slater, um, and your thirty-six years, uh, speed, smell swings are my copy. I agree with Lori, speed's an issue and I don't know, I think some kids just got the license because I live on the tenth Ave and they're coming through, you know, there's a couple of them. You have kids, you know, I don't know, they're out of sight, they're doing things they shouldn't be doing, so keep in mind that, um, or more y'all as in the act because I'm seeing, I think we worked early in R thirty-eight, I'm seeing, uh, troopers, I, I meet them, I'm not pulling the overs, I don't know.
Sheriffs or troopers, would you say?
So, last month, our last meeting, we said, you know, if you're seeing speakers, call the sheriffs too. Just telling us, we can tell the sheriffs, but that's not getting anything done, you need to, when you get, when you have that, you need to pick up on a call. You just get them notified from every angle of town, it's happening everywhere, just the citizens, it's not just from the county.
Yeah, we need to overwhelm them a little bit with those type of calls.
We've been the same thing with like, obviously someone's coming from the block, they're first. Like they are not knowing the speed on the bike and even I know that they're falling, they're not going to be coming out there, but.
Yep, yeah.
Especially if there's a pattern.
And it's all day long.
Right, but like especially if there's a pattern, if it's, if it's drive time, morning and evening drive times, that, that might help them, but more than fair enough to let them know, it's literally all the time, but, but it does help, I think them, I mean, they, they weren't here for five months in a row, so they didn't hear anything for five months in a row. And then, and then we can tell them and they, they up their enforcement for a week and then they're, they're gone, so I think, I think that's right, I think you just have to keep on them and let them know.
It's not a nine-one-one.
It's a non-emergency number.
Go ahead Keith.
Okay, I live on First, I've been there, I live on First Street and I agree with you a hundred.
There are kids all day, randomly stay in the backyard, but what if one of my kids were to take off for the front yard and not stop, there's, there's no way.
But we have all kinds of issues and I know there are a few years back. One of them, I hollered at him and tried to stop some of them a lot of times and there was a lady who used to live here in town that I hollered at her one day and about a month or so later, she came over to me, she said, I want to thank you. And I said, what, you know, I have no idea, and she said, that day you hollered at me out there, she said, when you come off of R thirty-eight on one, there's that slope and it's just enough, if you're not paying any attention, you can get your, very, very quickly. And I know I, for that, we need to do something about that, but I mentioned about four-way stops. You know, not only on First, on Main Street too, I've seen them flying down through there. Also, we get the problem all around town, I know Sean's probably seen them, I live on First too. They're probably starting to slow down by the time they get here.
It's, it's every street in town, it's every street in town, any citizen you talk to has the same problem, that's why we need to use, like, the sheriffs.
Especially on Main Street too, you know, Main and First, there are a few main ones that they, people use a lot to, they use First Street to go down, cut down to go everything and there's just tons of people that are just flying down.
Yeah, thank you Keith, Tim, you want to finish your thoughts, I think we've got speed.
South sider, um, it's more, and I thought my wife and I are getting used to it, then we have friends over around town, anybody is this, and so I have to tell them, so I don't know, whatever you can do, do it, try it, one last thing, Southside with all the housing, they have small kids, they have grandkids, the Southside Park, we have one swing and one baby swing. They need a set of six swings down there, kids are waiting in line, it's a area, it's a small park, but it's, it's getting a lot of use. I said my back window, I see a lot, it seems to be, I'll see, I think the engine may be replaced, so that's fine, but.
Yeah, the baby swings broke?
We need to put some money.
I just have to.
More because people back down there, the bridge is kind of looking a little wobbly, I think the frame's okay, but the wood's looking, so let me take a look at it and I think their price will appear and probably help out with that.
Perfect, yeah, thanks, thank you Tim. Uh, I have Jerry Hole on here.
Yeah.
Were you gonna talk, sorry, I see you have some notes on here, maybe consistent with Tim.
Um, both with him, Lori, same thing, uh, one of the best examples, I'd say goes last year and you do get a little bit used to it unfortunately. Um, but when you've been away for a little bit, come back, you're driving down the street, you got the air on and you, you're like, oh snap, you smell, you smell it before you put your windows down and you're like, oh God, I gotta deal with this, so that was, that means, that means you're pretty strong. So, uh, the other thing is, uh, the R thirty, R thirty-eight thing. Um, just whether I'm talking to the dog or trying to go across, I'm like, I'm an ex-truck driver, some pretty weird tunes, speeding stuff and it's nuts the way they go down, something needs to be done on, where do you put a dummy sign in that doesn't give tickets, I don't know, it'd be awesome if you did that. Um, be grateful if something could be done on that end just because the zones, I think really are too are too far apart basically, you know, twenty-five, twenty-five to forty-five and while it's still in twenty-five, but you're coming through, you're headed, um, you're headed south, they're going fifty sometimes, so.
Yeah, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, so that's way too, and, and this isn't your problem, but it adds to it, I haven't done it for several years, but when you have a cell phone, you call towers, you got the wrong tower and I'm like, fine, I'll handle it myself and then you'll follow the car and then just drop it because, I mean.
Yeah.
They're, they're driving or riding, it's like, so.
Mm-hmm, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that's everybody that wrote their name down, is there other public comment, if you just say what you're, go ahead, Perry.
I just have a question, if we call the non-emergency number about speeding, we are to say, people are speeding. Please come and watch, what are we supposed to say?
I tell them if you have a description, it's the same vehicle you keep seeing or if it's a truck that you see that is blasting down, you catch the name of the truck, just call them and say, and tell them, you know, the speeding's been ridiculous here and we need a sheriff's presence.
I'm Kyra, I live in Slater, I just. I think the more, they have to log all those calls, right, so those calls get logged and then we get a report that says, you know, whether they responded to the call or dealt with the call or not. You know, we just unfortunately, you look at some of this reporting that they give us, the county sheriff and a lot of their time spent in towns where they have crime issues, they have other issues that we don't have, not, you know, which is a really good thing. But unfortunately, because the way our agreement works, they, there's only so many of them and there's so many towns, they work on ten different towns in the county. We unfortunately are probably the safest of all ten.
The highest paying.
But the highest paying. Right, so we will renegotiate that contract sometime here at the end of the year, the last time it was negotiated, there wasn't a Slater representative present. So, I, the goal would be to really be kind of strict on that and be a little more aggressive on how we handle that. Um, and then before we move, move into that, hi Mark.
Welcome.
Thank you for responding to the call, hopefully everything's okay. Uh, so we're on this topic, um, on the sewer smell topic, multiple of you have brought it up, I'll say, um, Mark and I have had a good conversation about it, I think, you know, for those of you that don't know Mark, Mark fixes, you know, everything and takes on and tries to fix everything, you know, to the best of the ability and on all the resources we have and will, you know, call experts and try to find some things and so Mark and I recently had a conversation because I think, you know, Mark lives down there too, so the problem is ongoing, we do know that, that's, you know, we're not naive to that, I think, um, one of the challenges, uh, has been in the first year, there's some things that change, right, and the, the settling and the operations, understanding it, but obviously something's not working right, right, at this point, it, it's not working right, so I have personally asked Mark and we've talked about getting some expert opinion and just assessing what's the plan, because I think Mark's tried, I don't know the list of things, but I could give you examples from, you know, like all kinds of different things. So, I think we're to the point now where we're seeking out some alternative recommendations as to what needs to specifically change. Um, and then Mark is here.
I've been in correspondence with, with engineers, different engineers, different, different sources.
So, the hope is or the task that's been assigned, just one second Keith, well, the task that's been assigned at this is, can we get three, maybe four different opinions? Because we need to come up with a, a fix versus, uh, trial and error at this point, and I think that's what I hear a lot of you saying, but go ahead Keith.
I'm just curious, does Girlswine or Snyder's have any skin left in this game or?
I.
Do we have any recourse on that, this city? Early design or?
You know the answer to that, on warranty year.
Mark's here from Snyder, by the way, he's picked the night to come where, the topic is getting, this is Mark, he, he, I will just say, Mark, I met Mark when I became mayor, he kind of stepped into this, there was other people on the face of this project, Mark stepped in because we wanted some more hands-on support, so first off, thanks for that, right, you didn't have to do this, you could have left it to a colleague, so we appreciate you stepping in on it, but um, I don't know the technical answer to that, but I assume there's a warranty period and maybe that's over.
Relative to the, the plan itself, I think part of the, the issue is just related to when, on, on the treatment process, which was, you know, we've all heard about this new and innovative treatment process. The, uh, thing that kind of went along with that is when it's the first one that was ever designed, like this, this is the very first one anywhere ever, which is really good because it's a technology that I think you'll see will be expanded throughout the world, the entire world. Uh, I think in terms of the, the, this particular one, as you noted before, I said, if somebody made a comment of now there's things in terms of that design on this, in this location that, um, when it's the first one, there's probably things that will regard for us, for hard for Mark to anticipate, opposed to the things, but the good thing is, is I think we know, uh, you know, that there, that we agree there is an issue and there's a number of ways that I think that issue can be resolved and we've exhausted the easy ones, you know, the less expensive kind of options, I think Mark's done a very good job of trying to methodically, because if you just jump to the most expensive, which we could have done, and you don't know if the least expensive ones can work, so I think we've exhausted those, uh, kinds of right, now, now's the time of, we just, it just needs to get fixed, it's a, it's a problem and what are those options that can be fixed, so I think, you know, we have some ideas on that, it sounds like you're soliciting other ideas and so through the course of that process, I think it will get to the point where, oh, this is the option that, that needs to be fit, when it needs to be fit, as far as the kind of the liability and those kind of things, I would say, well, the, uh, at least from our standpoint, we probably have, you know, Girlswine can speak for themselves, but I, I would assume they would think that, given the design process that we had and you, you ended up getting what the kind of the scope was and what you were trying to get and this is one of those, you know, things that happened because it's the first one. I, I think they would say, just like there was other things through their design that had to be tweaked along the way, uh, within their design because they kind of learned and tweaked it, you know, and I think that would, the same thing would apply on, on this issue. But I, I would say, we've spent a good chunk of time trying to come up with these intermediate steps with, with Mark and that hasn't been any charge to the city to co- facilitate that and I would say we would continue to, you know, work to try to help the city just for that cause of realizing what everybody's, you know, dealing with or interested in providing that expertise to, let's just get it behind us and get it resolved and that's, uh, where we stand.
Yeah.
And we were, we're on the same page as wanting it to be done, uh, if I lived there, I would feel the same way, you know, I, I would want it not to not to smell, so I would want everything that needs that, not to smell, I think that general premise is correct and, you know, we just need to you know, find that solution, which that's where we're at, this, we just gotta get the solution and get it installed and move on and, and I appreciate some of the comments or stats, you know, before it wasn't like there was never any smell. I mean, there's, so there'd be some smell, but I think it makes sense that it's not close, even close to what, what, what needs to change.
Just for clarity, in conversation with GWT, they said that the greenhouse is obviously there's the rat facility. Uh, and they implied at least, and I would like your comments, that everything outside of the greenhouse itself was a Snyder design, is that a correct statement from GWT?
Yes.
Okay, would you agree that primarily the issue right now is that, that settlement farm right in front of the?
Yes.
Red, okay, and that's your design, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Keith Hedlund, did you have something?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, who's going to be responsible for the updates and stuff, is it going to be you guys or is the city going to be stuck for the bill or? What's going to happen that way?
I think what, yeah, what I was getting at is I think we would be, you know, interested in helping facilitate the, the design of whatever the, the kind of finals terms of the, the construction cost or the physical adding pipe or those kind of things, I would think that would be part of the cost of the project because theoretically, if we would have known that was going to happen, well, that would have been in the project and we would have installed those pipes or whatever it is as part of the product. It just didn't get installed as part of the project, so there would be a cost, there would be a kind of a project cost right now, we, you know, that's what it takes to not have, you know, that particular issue. But that's, you know, that's part of the discussion and we're happy to carry on and have those conversations.
Yeah, you had a comment.
Yeah, what, what time for, for the resolution?
I think, I think we're in the driver's seat on that personally and just my, my opinion, I was not a part of the design, this project was designed for years.
Uh, my conversations with Mark a little bit and, and no offense to Snyder is they designed it and this is the problem, I'd like to know what three or four other people say because they may say they didn't know what they were doing and they designed it wrong. And at that point, I think the council here needs to look at the, the three or four different solutions and say, uh, this one seems to be the best and then we'll obviously out of, you know, the courtesy to the relationship, go back to Mark and Snyder and kind of be like, this is what three opinions said of other firms that are specializing in wastewater treatment. Why did we end up on this design and we obviously would like to see it be fixed at no cost to the taxpayers, I mean, but I, you know, that probably changes the game to more of a, you maybe have attorneys involved, you maybe have more of that and I think everybody'd like to avoid that if we can, because that's just probably more money, but I think there, ten more time, so I think the reality is just, uh, what's the best solution and I don't think we can just, I don't think I'm comfortable to saying, hey Mark, what's the fix and just trusting Snyder's fix at the moment, I think we need to get a little bit of understanding from outside sources or alternative sources is where I'm at from an opinion perspective and that is in, no offense, no offense to you, Mark.
You have timeline for when those experts will be here?
So, yeah.
I've been in touch with two others, uh, today, so I was gone all last week, um, had good conversation with them and had lots of ideas, they, they want to come look obviously, so hopefully next week or so we have.
And we're asking for some kind of some, uh, written, like this is how we would fix the problem, a proposal type thing. Um, and ideally then we as a council would, you know, and even as a smaller council, we can pull some, a council member or myself together offline and just jump in and look at, like, okay, here's the option, do we need to call the council together to make decisions on this and then obviously consult and have a conversation with Snyder about what's the solution and how do we best remedy and fix it, because it just can't keep, we just can't keep going on hoping it goes away, because it's not going to, and I think everybody's in agreement on that topic.
Mark, there's a question for you, when we, uh, did the interviews for the Jen's second position, uh, we set up a team, Sue and myself and Jen and Taylor to try to help diversify some of the workload, would a project team like that, obviously you're vested, you both live there, it's your job. I'm obviously vested, so I'd be volunteered, but I.
Yeah, honestly, it might be more of a, I, I don't think so.
Okay, because this is a big.
If I need something, I, I know I can seek help.
Okay.
It, it's almost sometimes more work to plan around.
I just know you have your day job, which takes the, the whole time job and this is no more task.
This is basically to meet somebody for a short time, go through it and then wait for a proposal, you know.
And I think, just so everybody knows, I think Mark took a vacation last week for the first time this year, I think, so he has not had the chance in the last week to work on it, we talked about it on Thursday before he left on, on Sunday. I think the expectation is that this is number one priority, top priority and Mark was in agreement in that conversation, so this should be, we should be working aggressively towards those solutions in the week, into the next week with the holiday and hopefully by the, we have a council meeting again on the eighth.
Correct.
June eighth is our next council meeting, it would be July, sorry, hard to believe, um, July eighth, the goal would be that we'd have a couple of proposals at that point with some expertise to put behind it and then trying to derive a plan forward.
Go ahead, Tim.
Thanks, real quick, so last time I was here a month ago, the Shell Doll is binding to this Lagoon system, correct?
Yes.
Does that settle, does that contract, are they legally binding, so if there's more extensive moving forward, are they going to be putting this here? Being forward, like, and can this be resolved, I mean, we're thinking, but if it don't work, what if it doesn't, okay, now we're going to, the money has to come from somewhere, I think we have some money later, we're not, I think, you know, a lot of you, but my question is, is Shell Doll binding to this contract, if we're talking about future repairs, they, they're.
In theory, but you know how those type of things are, when we go to pass that cost through, who's to say they aren't like, well, we're, that's not our fault, that's your fault and then it turns, but contractually, they, we're contractually bound to them, they're contractually responsible for a certain percentage of the, the costs associated with operating and maintaining the facility. Yes, I don't know that they've paid us in full at the moment, but they're waiting on the USDA money to hit their bank account and then they're going to pay us and this sort of last council meeting, maybe you're remembering that we set the deadline that they had to pay us by.
So, it is agreed and as long as they follow the agreement, then yes, the, the payments will be there. Tim does have a good point though, as this moves forward and if we come up with something that's substantial cost, it's probably something we need to discuss with Shell all in advance instead of earlier.
Yes.
That's all fair to them.
And one last thing, if they're big here, do we know big here, how much they owe us, that's what it's idiots later.
Yeah.
The part on the original project and that percentage, yeah.
Yes.
It's a million dollars.
How much?
A mil, one million dollars, approximately a billion dollars.
It, it, the specific numbers in one of your, you know, yeah, I can question that.
It's like a percentage of the total costs and we negotiated the percentage of the, so the round to the percentage.
And then ongoing annually, they'll pay a percentage of what it costs to operate that facility and maintain that facility.
There's no limit, so our costs keep going down every time.
A percentage, it's a percentage of the maintenance and it's actually tied to the flow, right, of what comes to us from them that we work together to measure with them and they measure. So if they grow, they're, you know, it'll, it should align that percentage. So if they grow, they're, you know, it'll, it should align that percentage. At least contractually.
The market of this gets big, the offer stands. Sounds like at this point, you don't wanna, necessarily, but offer definitely stands.
I appreciate that.
Cause you know, I mean, on the same street.
Yeah, so I agree.
So hopefully we'll have, well, the goal is to have uh, more substantial report for you on the eighth. Of July. And.
Might be pretty, looking at a.
Yeah.
Holiday. Holiday in there.
Yeah, it certainly, it certainly, it certainly will, but.
Good goal, we'll see.
But we need to have, we gotta have a, we gotta have somewhere to, to, to put a deadline.
We can have another meeting in July if we need.
We can refresh, yeah, if we need to based on opinions. And then obviously the respect to talk with Snyder as well about what was here. Any other comments, public comments? Perfect. All right. So we'll close the system form here and move into the presentation reports, department's updates. Jen, library update, I saw you were here, you are here, we're here on the floor, sorry.
All right, real quick, we got a lot of people here. Uh, we are in the middle of our summer reading program right now. We do five weeks of programs. We finished two, we're in our third week. We take a break next week because of the fourth and then we'll have two to finish up after that. Um, currently we have almost four hundred kids registered for this summer, which is the most we have ever had and quite a bit more than last summer. In our first two weeks, we did twenty-eight programs and we had a thousand eighty-seven people attending those programs. So yeah, so we um, have moved a lot of our programming back to the library. We were doing a lot of it at the park the last few years. Um, and it just got to be where, I mean, I was very thankful today to have air conditioning and not be hauling. Set up and having bring back. So what we've had to do is make more drop-off programs where the parents are dropping off the kids and we're just. Really asking them to like. Please go to the park and go to the coffee shop and go do other things so that you can come back. And that has worked well for us. I don't know how that's working well for them, but. The numbers that they're, they're bringing us, their kids are probably like, thank you, take that. But yeah, it's been nice though. The kids have been very attentive that way. We don't have as many distractions with siblings and parents and things. So. Um, we've been able to be very um, specific in our programming, making it very age appropriate. We do book clubs. You know, we do our pop program. We have what bugs for our uh, kindergarten, we have first and second grade group, a third or fifth grade group, a middle school group. So um, those are just some of our regular things. We have Lego club. Um, we do have performers on Thursday that, that does still have to be at Nelson Park because those are um. Much too large to have at the library. Um, and thankfully the weather has cooperated for that. But um, yeah, well, and a lot of our programs we have had to close because um, we are. Restricted on how many people we can fit in there. Um, we've also been able to use the senior center, which isn't ideal, but we're thankful for that. So um, on Wednesdays, we have our Slater touch, because we do obviously have to have the parents stay with our little ones. But we are pulling out the older siblings and taking them over to the senior center and doing some activities with them. Um, last week we had twenty siblings that went over to the senior center. So it was full and then we still had eighty people at the library for the program. So. Been going well. Um. We have some things coming up to keep in mind. We have um, some fundraisers coming up on July third. There is a porch concert at Evie Reyes's house. And that is a fundraiser for the new library and community center. Um. And then we are doing, uh, this is the most fundraiser, but we are having pinwheels that the kids can make at the park after the kiddie parade on the fourth. Turn on the third, sorry. Yeah, I was coming on that. So that is happening as well. Um. That is doing trivia at the park on the Fourth of July. So please come and. Put together a team for that. The friends have a golf tournament coming up on August twenty-fourth for any golfer. And then this isn't a um. Fundraiser, but one of our, we have weekly family activities and on July eighth, we are having our first ever children's farmer's market. And that is for, um, just for kids. The kids are the vendors and we're doing that on Monday. Night on the library lot. Um, the rain date is the Tuesday and if we have to do that, we'll move to Nelson Parks. Regular market. Um, but we have thirty kids signed up to sell stuff and they have been making like. They're doing woodworking and baking and farm produce and. I think they're gonna put some of our adults to shoot. We tried on stuff I've seen these kids working on. I thought, talking to a kid today who was. Like making candles and he was doing the whole thing, like coming up with the scents and, and putting the wax together and he made. Holders to put them in. So anyway, please come and support those kids on the eighth. Um. What he, but they have been working. So we've been work, we've had several nights where they're learning how to count change and talking about a business plan. And um, they're making signs this Thursday night and stuff like that. So yeah, so please come to that on July eighth. They would love to have you there. Uh, Story County Raising Readers is also coming and they're passing out free books to every child who attends that night. Um, and we're trying to have some other things there too. Yeah.
What time is it?
It is, uh, I wanna say five to six thirty. Yes. Um, so yeah, and all of our information is on our new website. So please go there and you can look at our calendar. Um, and if you don't follow us on Facebook or Instagram, we post all of our information too, so.
The question, I read your notes.
Yes, no.
Um. And there's sometimes questions about the number of local kids versus not local. They booked your numbers. Sometimes the kids from their programs is a best place. You'll remember what the numbers were.
Oh, I don't know how many are local. We don't ask that, don't ask that. I mean. I mean, yeah, and especially if you're just looking at the Ballard School District, which, you know, so we pull in from our, our entire district. But we also have people that come from Madrid and Ames and Anthony. So, yeah, but they're mostly our, our own area.
It's been a question that came up and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you for continued good work, Jen. Perfect. Thank you so much. We appreciate you greatly. Uh, okay, Mark, your update period, we covered probably one of the topics, but.
Yeah, I guess on the other side of the, on Lagoon, obviously, um. I guess I don't know if I mentioned last meeting that we did have a little tornado that went and got some of the greenhouse. Uh, ripped out a panel, sucked in a lot of the other panels. So that's kind of a. Ongoing insurance. Claim that we're, it's finally starting to move, but we finally had somebody come out and looked at, look at it from the greenhouse company. Looks like they're gonna have to replace the whole west. Uh, is what they said, the whole west roof. Just kinda, they ripped one panel off of the east side. And then just sucked like the other side in a little bit. Uh, that same tornado uprooted a tree out of the cemetery. Um, no other damage except for that and some debris, but nothing.
Maybe that happened.
In May.
That was late May.
Yeah, maybe.
The big tornado.
It was early morning, is that the greenfield? It was like a five o'clock in the morning.
No, it was.
Wasn't the greenfield?
There was a bunch of like F zeros or something.
So that's insurance claim.
Structure, just skin.
Just the skin.
Good.
Yeah. Uh, once, I mean, you can see it from Arthur or from Southland.
Yeah.
And one's another, one other one tilted over, but.
Yeah.
The whole, which I only thought there was five or six panels that were sucked. They said the brightest changed everyone. So, so that has been another thing that we've been dealing with. And then talking to Melissa from uh, Story County. See, I need that into the FEMA monies. So. We'll try again, I guess, because we did not, and you guys will see that on the.
Snow, snow.
So. I guess we'll try it. So.
They were in town. Jen told you that now, but somebody stopped her.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and so they were actually.
Oh.
Under the impression that.
Yeah, well, and maybe that's, yeah.
And Story County Emergency Management.
And I've talked to uh, the local FEMA rep that's in the noise. I've talked to him on the phone.
Yeah, they were driving around.
So, so it's hand, I mean, it's ongoing.
Perfect.
All right, well, we're just getting ready for the fourth, so.
Awesome. Uh, Jen?
Um, well, the new deputy clerk Danielle has been with us for about two weeks now. She's doing some updates on the website. Um, in particular, she's been kind of focusing on the calendar. So. We can get more activities and be more, be more. Um, relevant there. So. Give the, give the website a new look every once in a while. We're getting stuff more out on Facebook. She's doing well. Glad to have somebody.
Yeah, is that it? You got it, yep. Uh, so I'll, I'll run through some quick updates here um, in a second, but I.
A couple of questions for Jen. Um. After the last meeting, we had some changes in the daycare. You were gonna send us updated verbiage. Sue had written something worse quick. Uh, resolution forty-one.
Yeah, we, yeah, I got, it got amended and.
Yeah, I was sure you were gonna send that to us. And then on resolution forty-three, which is sports complex, we voted to hit that pin, but I don't think any of us have actually seen the. Life diagram, I'm gonna send that to us on the.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, the, the news one from Snyder, the boys are taking it. Um. Resolution forty-four, I think you're gonna send us the final wages. That we, we had.
Filled out.
With the final adjustment. And I know we had a lot of discussion last meeting about some of the issues we're having on Main Street. Got that table, do we got that handled? Where do we stand about some of the things that are going on in West Main? That I don't know the appropriate.
Well, I think the first, I haven't, since Mark got back, we haven't connected, but one of the things that we needed to take action on, we need to take action on is. The marking of how parking needs to occur here. On North Story, figure, you know, figuring that out. Mark, I know was, had started the research on what precedent exists in the town based on widths of street. Um, so I think it's a matter of. Put it on the list to execute probably the marking of that or get it out to be approved at our next meeting potentially. Um, I don't know if we have to, do we have to have a resolution to ordinance regarding the parking structure format? Probably not. So, yeah, just speed limits or so. Okay, so, so uh, work towards marking towards that. I don't know. Do you wanna share what you're, if you have a thought now, you're being put on the spot here and.
I have a couple thoughts, so.
Okay. Um, so really just look at how we, how we mark this out here and how the parking needs to be done there.
There's some issues there. Not even let that get away from us. We didn't really have a resolution.
That's the first one for sure.
Yeah.
Good, okay. Uh, so I wanna jump on the sports complex real quick and just update everybody. Uh. We kind of recultivated a relationship with Story County Economic Development. They opened the door, reminded us about a grant opportunity inside of the county. Jen scrambled and threw together the documents we submitted for a grant and requesting around a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in support of the. Sports complex. Um, that was selected based on uh, the shovel readiness of the project and the timing that the funds have to be utilized. So we'll hear about that in the next month, I think, whether we're awarded that or not, but it could be a nice boost to. Our sports complex, um, and it's money right from the county that's being handed out to our competing towns in the county. So. I think that's really exciting, good news, because that's a significant chunk of chains on a, change on a project like that. Per perspective, we had about three hundred thousand dollars saved. So this would be a fifty percent boost to what we had put away for it. Uh, I also um, talked to today the realtor for one oh six third app. This is a property that's come up a lot. It's where. The house burned down. It's the property that's just east of the log cabin. So the property just east of the log cabin there. Um, that is uh, a property that a guy bought demolished. Um. They have, I know they reached out to City Hall. They would like to look at, and he sent me some plans related to a. The construction of. Triplex there. It's not zoned that way today. Um, so I would like to, I haven't had the chance. I just got it today. Um, and I expressed to him that yes, we are open to looking and considering this. We don't like to get in the habit of spot zoning, changing the zones in random locations. However, with uh, duplex just north of there, maybe we could figure something out. But the best thing that could happen for any progress on that would be to keep the yard mode and to get the debris out of the yard. So if you'll help me, I'll try to help you. So I asked him like. Let's get the Chalata cans picked up out of the yard. Let's get the debris out of the yard and let's mow it. Otherwise, Mark and I have agreed that will, the city will go pull the debris out of there before the fourth, if we have to, at their cost. So. We'll get it, we'll make sure it's cleaned up before the fourth. I know that's a big concern for a lot of people because it really is an eyesore. But we're gonna try to facilitate a conversation at least to what they'd like to do and why, and then maybe take it to planning and zoning to have a further conversation about whether we can actually. Do anything with it. Um. One other thing I've been working on the park board, ran with it for me, is a screen, a um, more of a decorative type uh, cover screen for our dump lot out here. Our, the High Tussle Trail, as they say, some people argue, three to four hundred thousand riders. Here it curves around the co-op here on our northwest side of town. I'm really excited at the park board last night. They've pursued and got some quotes on some alternative wind screens for us or not wind screens, but privacy screens. So they've got a design similar to those that are at the Ballard High School and on the baseball field down here that say, you know, welcome to Ballard. This says, welcome to Slater. So they priced that out for us and are bending it. We're gonna hopefully at the meeting on the eighth, consider the costs associated with that. It's just under six thousand bucks on a revised quote. So the park board and us are kind of discussing where that could fall. But think it would be a really nice investment to cover up that dump lot as three hundred thousand riders ride through our town. And it just says, welcome to Slater and has our logo on both ends. Think it's a really clean look that. Um, covers that lot, but keeps it usable for Mark and his guys. I wanted to remind everybody that Studio two oh five, that's the old Casey's um, down on two ten. They're having a ribbon cutting on the twenty-seventh, so that is Thursday at eleven o'clock and they're handing out free lunch. So. Uh, those people that are residents here that lives here, you know what a, what an eyesore that was. And that's an eyesore that is, you know, impacting twenty-some thousand cars a week or more. So it's a really nice improvement to the community. So if you're around, if you work from home, if you have the availability. I think it's a really nice compliment to show up and show them that we support what they did, um, because they invested a lot of their own money to fix that building. So that's the twenty-seventh at eleven AM. Um, you're also gonna see some activity on three twenty-one Main Street. Uh, this is the building that has the west wall that people have been concerned about. Um, the city made a decision, we're moving forward in the purchase process of that. Um, the city of Slater and the restoration of the west wall to stabilize the building. You're gonna see some more information up there and we'll continue to drop some information out of there once we get more details, but. I think uh, the community will be excited about what our intentions are. We really wanna save it and attract a real nice anchor to our main street. And we're working on a proposal process with economic development at the county level, the state level, and we're gonna try to really make an exciting process about bringing. Um, a unique, but also probably uh, staple to hopefully our main street. Go ahead, Tim. It wasn't ever technically condemned. That was just uh, probably a chatty chat, a Ballard chatty shack rumor, right? Come on. We've all seen the chatty shack rumors. It was never condemned. There's varying opinions about the. Safety of it. And you talk to one guy, it's this and that, and it costs this and that. And that building's been shown, I don't know, hundreds of times. But you'll see uh, Dee Dee, uh, Bert Solshon's mom and uh, Suzie are doing some nice painting on there for the fourth. To try to get people excited about what we're gonna do. You'll also see a fence go up around the west side for the fourth, for us to just make sure we keep people away from that side. We're not concerned about it falling over necessarily, right today, tomorrow, but there is some of these, is it stucco or? They painted over it, it's falling away. You can't cover up brick like that because then the brick delam, that old brick delaminates and it turns to sand and then it just falls off. So we're gonna fix that wall as a city and save that building and then hopefully find somebody that'll do something great with it. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to update on, which is a topic, most people haven't noticed this, we haven't published it yet. Highway two ten, the speed zones have changed. If you haven't seen that, we, and that is a somewhat of a cumbersome process to get the DOT to change your speed zones. They have adjusted the speed zones to thirty-five miles an hour right before the trail. Do you remember when we did our speed study, the thirty-five mile an hour zone was right about by the Baptist church? And so from the trail to there was forty-five miles an hour still in our town. We were able to work with them. Mark did some paperwork. We also had a local resident that helped us. We got thirty-five moved out past the trail on the west side of it. And forty-five then moved a little further west. Um, we worked on this, the speed camera update is this, and I'm trying to talk really quick here to keep us flowing because I know it was a big topic coming up, but. We worked on um, the speed, we worked, did a lot of work on the speed cameras. The consensus was to continue the path forward. Our legend, you know, our, our capital down there, they made a decision to kind of try to outlaw that, that, that didn't work, but they created a permitting process that goes through the Iowa DOT. So another one of those cumbersome processes. What I've been told is that right now, based on the language that's been put out there. A new, new permit request will not be looked at until twenty twenty-six, July twenty twenty-six. New permit request will not be looked at until twenty twenty-six, July twenty twenty-six. That's evolving and changing, existing ones are supposed to have, existing traffic, speed camera systems are supposed to have an answer by October, whether they're. They granted the permit and can continue to operate. They will take permits away from certain places, they want to see all the remedies you tried before you put a speed camera in. So that, you know, stay tuned, we're gonna keep that hot on our issue, we think that's. Um, and the residents spoke out at that meeting, that that's a, that's maybe the best option we have, if we can't force the sheriff or we don't start our own police force. And then lastly, Mark and I, another plan Mark and I have been working on, that just comes down to fitting into the schedule. Um, is we are going to work on updating the speed zones coming in from south on South Lynn. We're gonna add a thirty-five mile an hour zone, we've agreed to that. The forty-five mile an hour zone, if you've seen out there, it's kinda crooked and it looks old, we'll update that sign or get it straightened out at least, so it's clean, we'll get a thirty-five zone in there. And then we'll have to do an application process with the DOT, but we have talked and then agreed to add. A, and if I'm putting agree in your mouth, I'm pretty sure we have agreed, but a speed feedback sign um there, so. We can't write tickets, but hopefully we can have a speed feedback sign, and then we've talked on north, north um Lynn. What I've asked Mark to look at is moving the twenty-five mile an hour zone north of the path, the bike path. And the speed feedback sign right there accompanying it, hopefully, we just haven't got down to going and looking at it and saying, this is where I think it should go and that, but it's up. It's on the list to fix, the state also, just so you know, changed the speed zone from coming in east to west, it actually went, it went up. Technically, and the county will tell you, fortunately, we control our zones, but the South Lynn area, I'll tell you, cuz the county told me directly. That actually our town should be considering increasing the speed on South Lynn Street, because it's not a residential area, it's, it's. There's not sidewalks, it's not residential crossing of that intersection, the county thinks that we should increase that, and we obviously aren't. Agreeing there, but just so you know, that's, that's the perspective is that twenty-five is too slow as long as we have it, which. We don't agree, so, um, that's a lot of updates there, but we are working on the speed thing, we, we've heard you, we wanna fix and get some of those things up. Um, but part of it is the, we gotta go through a process to get a free speed feedback sign from the DOT. And we, we will do that on two ten as well, but then we'll also have to purchase one. If we want one or two, if we wanna put new ones on south and northland, we're, we're working on those as fast as we can, um, and it is a priority. So just keep watching, we'll try to let you know when they're updated and out there. And then one other quick thought, we did get the crosswalk in, I shouldn't say that, hopefully everybody saw that, we got the push to cross, if you have kids and you have people crossing there. I've passed people that aren't using it, so if you know people and you can help spread the word. Mark spent, we spent money, Mark spent time, they put that in, there's a push button there. You still have to wait for a gap in traffic, the sign says, you can't just walk out and proceed like they do in Ankeny. You've gotta press the button and watch for the gap in traffic, so educate people, but we should be pressing that button and using that, it's, they're very bright yellow LEDs. And with the pool being used legalized right now, there's traffic there, so, so if you see people, you know people, educate them, help us spread the word. On that, go ahead. The speed feedback you're saying, to let people know? Okay, yeah. Yeah, did you guys notice the speed trap, uh, the sheriff will tell you, we don't do speed traps, but did you notice the uh speed? You didn't notice that, there was some heavy speed enforcement on Southland that they did two months ago? For a day, and they did pull a lot of people over, it's not enough. Oh, the running, the torch, yeah. We're not going to, I'm not gonna quit, we're not gonna quit, I meet with the sheriff regularly, I, I'm a thorn, I'm trying to be a thorn in his side in the right ways. Go ahead, Ken.
Would there be an opportunity to put a sign up along with this traffic, that just says camera? Photo, speed photo in use.
I don't know that answer, we'd definitely check into that.
I, I think, I mean, I think it's problematic, because people get used to it and they, and they know if they're not getting a ticket there, that it's just a joke, but. There are a lot of people that use that, you know, Iowa State, football games, that kind of stuff, that might help. Might help for that one, if they see that camera sign out there that says. You know, speed camera in use, doesn't mean it's being enforced, that we're sending tickets, but it might slow some of them down.
Yes.
I mean, you slow one of them down, you just slow the ones behind them down.
The one other thing that I didn't mention, Mark's done some research, we haven't brought the, pulled the trigger on purchasing, but we talked about a mobile. Speed feedback sign that would be rotated throughout town, and we could move, hey, uh, first street's horrible, the semis are bad, okay? We're gonna post that up there for seven days and then we'll move, move it to the next spot, just. It's awareness, hopefully, and it does make people think, so Ellen. On Lynn Street?
Yeah.
We don't know, I don't think we have the authority to install those on those streets because of the county, it's a county.
But if you drive past her and a branch falls out of your car.
Yeah.
You should not. See the branch fall out of your car?
Come on, Ken, you know Ellen better than that, there'll be a branch there in a few hours.
He had two by fours fall out of my car all the time.
And uh what they did, they were out to the board. And what they did, they had an old car that they fixed up, looks like patrol cars. And they put a dummy in there.
Yeah.
If you think it doesn't work, I can tell you it does, cuz I was lost going through that town and I walked over to this site, I probably about.
Slow down. Certainly, Keith, that's, that's not a bad suggestion, um, that's not a bad suggestion. Uh, so in closing, we have a lot, we have a lot of things going on, we're trying to accomplish a lot as fast as we can, you know, um, with. The staff that we have, so they have a lot of work and, and day-to-day work to keep the city running, these are things that we're trying to do on top of. You know, operating the city day-to-day, so, uh, please, you know, be gracious to these people when you see them, our staff out there working there. I'm throwing a lot at them, the council's throwing a lot at them, we're keeping the pedal to the metal with them, so, um, maybe sometimes doing annoyance, so. They're working hard, uh, let's go into some old business. We have a resolution forty here, this is the payout for Keller, the water sewer expansion to Severs Light Industrial Park. Severs Industrial Parks, two ten and um, is it five hundred that goes into Sheldon? Or a thirty-eight there that goes into Sheldon, so that's that development out there, Keller, you're digging, you see the fire hydrants. This is the first pay application, does anybody have questions related to this? I think, do they, they haven't opened the. The gravel yet, right?
They are on the north side.
They are open now on the north side, okay, great, so that means they're under and are they hooked up all the way?
They're, no, they're under, they're not tied into the, the old existing stuff yet, and they're not tied into whatever it needs to be. Actually hit a line yesterday and.
Yeah, so they'll hook the water up there, that's the water line, then they'll come back and they'll do the sewer line that'll come from down uh trail drive area kinda. That new development Prairie Creek and the sewer will then go up to the west to everything out there, just so people know what's going on.
Approve resolution forty, second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Anybody abstain, no? All right, perfect, so approval of cigarette tobacco permit for Casey's General Store, we have been kicking this can down the road in hopes. That somebody from Casey's would do something, or we could get somebody from Casey's to do something, and. I was here yesterday, and Jen said, you'll never, who you dismiss, the district manager from Casey's was here and asked why they don't have a new permit for tobacco and. That, so I think the message was heard.
The message was definitely heard, cuz not only did we get the district manager, we got the regional manager today.
Oh, really?
Because the phone number I happened to call was their legal department. Unbeknownst, but it worked, so. They, the, I told them that the, the, is that we just wanted to have a conversation that this particular store is an issue. They asked for us to actually take pictures, because. They said they're sending people there to inspect it, and every time they go, it's clean and it's organized, and so. As much as you're probably, I know you're gonna bombard me, but send me pictures that are time stamped, dated. To my email, and I will forward them to them, if it's a daily basis, it's a daily basis, because. They just aren't getting that it's an issue, and they said you can go to Huxley and it's managed better, you can go to Madras Casey's, it's managed better. Casey's is a, is basically a, a, a doormat to our community, cuz who doesn't stop at a Casey's? When they stop at a small community to get gas and drinks and snacks. It's our, it's a, it's a welcoming.
We've heard you, it's, it's grummy and we know it, they must not have been there since two thousand, but. We all know that it's, it's bad and we want it to get fixed, and, and so we've tried to apply the pressure, Kelly. The outside has been a really bad problem. Just blowing trash everywhere, if you're filling up with gas, you're probably picking up trash while your car fills up, if you're going there and you're. A good Slater resident, because it's out, the trash cans are overflowing and it's. And, and we'll keep the pressure on them here, um, we could obviously, as a town, right, say, no, you don't have your permit, well then, on July first. Going into the Fourth of July weekend, guess what, they're not selling cigarettes or tobacco. Um, and they'll probably find a way around us some way through the state of Iowa, but this is a little bit of a tool that we're able to use to, you know, try to get a little bit of attention, and I think. We'll see if it worked, it at least worked to get a conversation, now what the follow-through on their part is. And, and we're keeping conversations open, pursuing maybe competitions that could be interested in the area, so we'll keep that pressure applied on the back end as well. Does anybody have?
I, I actually, I'll put something out on the website, maybe a link directly to the, their email.
Either way, we can kinda try to help funnel them. Yeah. Couple extra Casey rewards or something, here's ten Casey's rewards, put your phone number in. Does anybody have any, I mean, at this point?
I make a motion, we approve the tobacco license for Casey's.
Second, anybody? Okay, so uh, all those in favor of approving the license, the permit? Opposed? Anybody abstain? All right, carries unanimously, all right, new business here, um, before we go into this. Um, let's, everybody, uh, we are going to hear about the plat, of summary for the potential Dollar General store. Kelly and Richard, um, and then we have the location here, uh, so. Please be courteous and respectful, right, this is uh, this is something that's important, that a lot of time and effort has gone into on there, and so. If we could please hear them out, um, and then we'll give some time for those folks that have arrived with comments. The floor is yours, if you'll just introduce yourself, just so everybody knows.
I'm Kelly Mineman, we're at three sixteen Worthland, which is technically county, but it's on the north side of our. We were called and spent a lot of time considering this from a lot of different standpoints. And then it led to major contracts to divide our land and. Uh, potentially put a dollar general, it's who called. Uh, we, from our standpoint, we had a lot of the same concerns that I heard from the. The me, as far as the people in your, our community as well, and we hear a lot, we had a lot of those same concerns. Our purpose in doing it was, it was a way for us to actually resolve another problem, where we would like to bring our businesses to Slater. And this was a way for us to achieve the. About that, I don't know that we'll be able to, but either way, that was, that was our, that was our deciding factor. Is that provided an opportunity for us to bring our business to Slater, provide that as an income to the community. Should have a fair amount of foot traffic that would never. To Nighthawk doing better, hopefully the coffee shop doing much better. I, I don't know, but either way, a lot of those businesses is being touched. That's why we made this, to go that route. Concerns that we addressed with them prior to that, you know, we were concerned about how other communities have been, there's all of them was not being well managed. So we discussed privacy fences and firms and low lighting, so that neighbors aren't impacted. All of those types of things have been discussed and.
If you could also just introduce yourself and who you are, how you're tied to this.
And I represent the buyer that's under contract, um, I think the important thing to amplify what Kelly said is, from our perspective. This is something that brings sales, sales tax to the community, it keeps, keeps you going. Um, you know, state law gives you the right to go out to that two miles zero mark, um, to review a project. So I think that's important that you understand, you know, why that project is here, but by the same point, you know. Iowa law says we can't make a decision or suspect the land use that's arbitrary and egregious. So from at least the discussions I've heard here before, it sounded like the negative feedback of planning, consulting, in fact, really all end user. So I think that's one thing also that you need considering your decision. Um, also, you know, depending upon how you decide it, it could be considered illegal spot zoning, that exclude our, on that. Excuse me, so what I'd really like you to do is, as I understand it, uh, reverse the decision of planning and zoning, because it would be our position. This is probably the highest investigation for that, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being here. Uh, so with that said, I think what would be best is for some public comment, if those, there's a few that signed up here, I'll start on the list of those that signed up. Yeah, or, or question, certainly, yeah, yes, certainly, certainly, and, and we, for first off, we appreciate you being here, right? Like, it's not, it's not an easy decision, we understand and recognize that, but to take the time to come here and share your reasoning, it's appreciated, and I wanna make sure that everybody's heard that. Cuz I think that's only fair, um.
Do we wanna read zone, planning and zoning's recommendation?
Certainly, yeah, we could do that, so the planning and zoning committee, um. Maybe I'll uh summarize a little bit quickly, just so everybody knows, so. Um, every member of the planning and zoning committee was there, uh, the chairman Kevin Holmes, we had Branch Schumpfer, Tron Fori, Richmond's. Ellen Thornwall and no absent, Jennifer Davies was there as well, um, so they've reviewed this and discussed, um, the, the meeting started at. Five oh two, is that right, five oh four? Um, and Schumpfer, um, Brent made a, a motion that was seconded by Menz to recommend, uh, recommend that we deny, um, for these reasons. One, commercial property at this location does not fit our comprehensive plan of growth. Two, the proposed newly created plat would be within a residential area, which would create a spot zoning condition and potentially have an adverse effect on property values. Three, the concerns of watershed drainage issues for A, the ingress and egress of the proposed newly created plat. And B, adjacent properties that already deal with drainage issues. Um, of the fourth reasoning, commercial property at this location would create additional traffic issues on an already heavily traveled road. Five, concerns of sanitary sewer issues if septic system is allowed versus connection to city sewer services. Six, this market area for Dollar General stores is already saturated. Seven, public opinion is opposed to commercial development in this area, and this motion did uh get approved with a vote of five to zero. And then they adjourned that meeting at five twenty-four PM. It was on May twenty. So that is our planning and zoning boards, uh, recommendation, after reviewing the details, and just so you know, uh. You know, admittedly, I haven't been through one of these planning and zoning situations at moment, but there is a significant list of plans, you know, for what that looks like. What was going there, et cetera, right, so the, the, the company, so if you could just clarify for me. The people that you all are working with and you're representing is not Dollar General. You're representing a developer. A siding company, okay. Okay, so there's a transaction that the land's purchased from you, then they own the land, do they sell that land to Dollar General then? Does that property physically become? Does that property physically become Dollar Generals or does it maintain?
It's leased, so whoever runs that Dollar General franchise is actually. Stays in the ownership of the purchase.
Okay. And you said franchise, so someone will buy a franchise right to that or somebody has? Okay, and would own that location.
They create to create this relationship down.
Okay, thank you for that ex- that explanation. With that said, I think we'll go to public comment for those that have comments and then we can circle back here with some council thoughts if there is thoughts based on. The opinions of everybody in, um, here tonight. So on the sheet I had, uh, well, Kelly, you spoke, right? Um, I have Suzie Hawke. Did you want to go ahead and speak? Yeah.
Uh, I don't know that my comments are necessarily related to the the flat conversation. I think my comments are more related to the concerns about Dollar General and what its impact would be. To the community, um, and they're, you know, my fixing currently due by both the attorney general of Missouri and Wisconsin, um. Prices on the shelves are different than what they actually right now that they're registered, um. But yeah, I guess my comments aren't necessarily related to this, just the the story and then all their.
Okay, thank you. Others with comments? Ellen?
Well, I think this is wrong on so many aspects. I'm on the planning and zoning and that those were all our concerns. But I think just because we've got an empty lot. Shouldn't mean. They put a bunch of cement in a building in there and call it good. And that poor house to the south, if you look at the slope, the house to the south is lower. Then, I mean, that house, that house is gonna have a basement full of water once you put a bunch of cement in there. Probably, but it's not, and that's really a a real bad location. Just to.
My question, if we leave Dollar General aside. And we talk about general property. Are you also supposed to put any different businesses?
If it's in a big parking lot and a lot of cement, it's gonna have runoff to the south, yes.
I think that they would have to, anybody that don't know that would have to move it.
Yeah.
Can't just shed it on this.
But I I guess I would probably be really on the map if I. Without being in 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 pinching on. Having people cruising in there at eight o'clock at night, right? You know, there's. Lights in the, in the hubbub on R thirty eight and I just, I just think. At the proximity to the uh, elementary, you know, in a semi back up. And slide in there to unload stuff, that's gotta be a spectacle because it's, it's really tight in there. And I, kudos to a semi driver, they can do that, but I, it it was, I think it's, it's just a bad location.
The other comment, anybody else?
I own a heart store, so we sell and repair the fireplaces, do building remodel construction stuff. My pictures for bringing that to town is a little bit more of that because space. Allows for them.
Go ahead, Keith.
I'm kind of concerned about how we can affect, you know, some of our businesses that are established here for years. Like Larry, stuff like that, that would. Take business away from them, which I hope it wouldn't. But, uh, you know, I'm concerned about that. You know, we don't wanna. Fill something off that's been good for us for years. Like Larry, it's been here, it seems like forever.
Yeah.
We don't want to do anything to manipulate or push him aside.
And I certainly, you know, I certainly think the points you're making are are good points. But I think when it comes to like Mr. uh, Fattino said, right? Is it related to the specific business or is there actual? Other reasons that relate to it because if we just say no to a random business, then is it, you know, are we being discriminatory? Discriminatory towards a certain business or do we, if you look at the plan and zoning's recommendation here, one thing that sticks out to me is. The first, it doesn't fit into the comprehensive plan in that location. That's not a location that the comprehensive plan says should be commercial. The second is that, um, it creates a spot zoning situation. So I talked about spot zoning where we have residential area and someone wants to put a triplex. In order to do that, we'd have to spot zone that place. It's similar up here. These are residential, 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 commercial, residential. So it's, it's, it's spot zoning a specific. Field into commercial that would is currently ag, I believe, and and would be sandwiched in a residential area. Um, I think the, the other reason Ellen said it, but. Concerns of watershed drainage issues ingress egress of proposed newly created plat and the adjacent properties, you know, I was just looking at our speed study that we did. We had twenty nine thousand four hundred and seventy one cars in just under seven days. On that stretch of road. In 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 January. So we think about that and you think there's not, you know, it looks like on the plan that's been proposed here, the the plat and subdivision. But I think long term, there's it, there's no turning lanes. There's, you know, major congestion could be caused by that. So another concern there about location. Um, I think, uh, the traffic issues, the sanitary sewer issues and the septic, you know, concerns about. The runoff and those things I think are are valid in those areas as you, you look at that. I also would say that in reading the proposal from, um. The proposal regarding that, I see they note that essentially we want your water, but we don't want your sewer. Regardless of whether we're annexed or not annexed, we have no interest in tying onto your sewer. We want to be septic. Um. I I noted that as well and they, it seems like they're kind of either or on the annexing thing, but we have to have your water. We want your water. Um, from the city of Slater. So there's an infrastructure cost to the city of Slater to get that water out to there. I assume we don't have water. It's there. So it's in the day, so we can get the water there. So that's maybe partially the reason why they requested that. So I think the key is I just reminding everybody. We all know everybody's opinions and emotions about Dollar General and sure that attorney generals and I don't know, it's almost a dozen states now that have sued them and all those things are. Dollar General, but this is specifically related to that plot of land and and why it shouldn't be subdivided for commercial use. Is more of the question. Chad?
Yeah, are we talking about actually going, if we approve this, will we, the council, they consider annexing? On that side of R thirty eight out to match whether or not on the west side or what is the the thoughts cuz I assume that we don't need any tax dollars that that. Uh, the attorney here is is talking about, is it not part of that skill?
It would be in the county, so it would not be, it's, we have not annexed to that point. I think it's four hundred feet. I think the, the plan and zoning. Noted that it's within three hundred feet of Slater city limit. I think our, I think our comprehensive plan, I can't speak exactly to it. Craig, you've read the whole thing, but there is in our comprehensive plan to annex. To the north at some point, um, obviously based on the growth of Slater. So the usage of that, I think, was focused and rest continuing residential like we've continued there, but I can't speak exactly to our comprehensive plan.
Don't recall the jump R thirty year.
To the east, yeah. So, but it would be, it would be county, so then the question of annexation comes up and it's, you know, it was requested, uh, in in the document that was sent here. Um, back on May sixth, they did say, I'll just a letter here, um, from the Overland Group, um. Uh, who must be the company that is the, you used the right term there, Mr. Fattino, this, the cider.
Siding.
Siding. Okay, the Overland Group is under contract to purchase property shown on the attached survey. We have plans to develop the site as Dollar General retail store. Our first step has been to contact Story County regarding the division of the proposed lot. It is our understanding that the county will soon contact the city for feedback on the proposed property division. If the lot split moves forward, our next step will be determine how best to serve the lot with water and sewer. Because sanitary sewer is some distance away from the Dollar General, water usage and water and Dollar General water usage is very low. We plan to request annexation into the city, connection to city water and approval to install a septic system. If annexation with a septic system is not possible, we plan to request connection to city water but remain in Story County. The purpose of this letter is to let you know that our, let you know of our plans and the possible requests that will be forthcoming should the property split be approved. Please let me know if you have any questions or comments. Sincerely, the Overland Group, Jacob Stauffer. So that letter was sent to us just in an explanation of what their intentions are. Um, but we wouldn't have anything to do with septic. That approval process would go through the D N R and just counting or something through there.
If they, if if they stayed outsider city limits.
But we wouldn't allow it into.
Uh, we we have.
We, we have.
The one that was already.
It would, it would have been if it was annexed in and already had a septic system in. We couldn't allow somebody to put in a septic system, annex them and then allow them to put in a septic.
Correct.
Yeah, well, I don't think, yeah, not that I can recall any of that.
Any other, uh, public comments?
There was a.
Yeah, go ahead, Dennis.
Access, uh, siding access, left and right, anywhere there. To make the driveway. The green trees. Spot zoning, it's in between several houses.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Dennis. Kelly, I saw your hand.
So if planning and zoning, zoning turned this down and the council agreed. Chooses to agree with planning and zoning and does not move forward with changing it, what is the next step? The project's dead or?
That'd be more of a question for Mr. Dino really, but, uh, it it historically in our experience, talking to them, my experience not being enough. So the experts here that have faced these before, the county has historically followed suit in what the city's recommended. They don't ha- they don't have to. Um, do that, but the, the precedent that we've seen is they would uphold what this council decides.
I'll just clarify, the county is the final decision making authority and the city has the opportunity to weigh in because we're. Within a certain distance.
Two miles, exactly.
My, my thought is obviously retailer that's being brought up is a seven day week. Uh, a lot of our other businesses in town that are seven days a week can't staff appropriately. Casey's is understaffed, Nighthawk is understaffed, Larry's is understaffed, like.
Yeah.
I mean, so if taking the brand name out of it, just looking at the other commercial businesses that are open seven days a week. A lot of them can't maintain staffing as it is, so I think that that would be a concern for me.
Yeah, and.
So many as.
And I don't disagree with you yet. It's still, that's to me, my, so my personal opinion, is there any other coming comments here? Go ahead.
I would just add that we keep updated for the community, whether it be through Facebook or some other forum. Of if we should be participating in the county meeting that they would have on, you know, county, no. If we should be a presence there, um.
I think we would know when that would be and can find that out and Jen could make sure that that's public knowledge.
Okay, yeah, just so that we can stay on top of.
Yeah. Yeah. Anybody else?
We did have a public comment that committed, we may not. Was not able to.
Oh yeah, so this is a. Public comment, I just, I just wanna. Summarize it here, I'm just reading it real quick, it, you know. Un- unfortunately, you know, some of, some of our, we jumped to the, the end user of the property and not just the basic. Breakdown of why you're not subdivising the land based on the condition of the land and the location of the land and those things, we gotta keep it honed into that cuz it's not about. We don't necessarily have to know the end user, they've provided that information. It could just be the subdivide for commercial development. That, that could have been provided. It's about that the land is not good enough for commercial development and it's spot zone, not about it's Dollar General. We all have feelings about Dollar General, just like we do everything else in the world. But I s- I see a lot of information here about just the Dollar General, negative experiences. Um, so you know, this is a, a nice comment here from Tyler Barrett, but heavy in just some of the similar things we've heard, so. Uh, we did receive that public comment. You know, and and I think the planning and zoning here has done a nice job of laying out. You know, the, the basic reasons associated with the specific location of the site and why the site is unfit to house future commercial development. Um. And and so I, I personally don't know how we could, how we overcome those and the information that I have that I've seen associated with this. I don't see that addresses any of that type of, hardly any of those type of concerns that planning and zoning turned it down for. Um, are really addressed in what the. Yeah, what is it? The information associated with the project that'll go there. Um, so I, I don't know how we can overturn planning and zoning and and I would just wanna say, Kelly, like. We, if we can, if the city of Slater can, we have an economic development team. We wanna work, we wanna.
Shot down, so I'm happy to try that out.
I would love to, I would love to sit down and talk with you and figure out if there's something we can do. I, it's a passion of mine and I'm working really hard to take advantage of that. So I, you know, just separating those issues, I want you to know. We very much care about having you. We, we care about you, even though you're not a resident, we do care about what you're trying to do here and and that. We would love to have your business here, it's.
Fully aware that there was probably gonna be respect cuz like I already said, we had a lot of the exact same concerns. We decided that greater good was gonna be potentially going this way, but if it's not gonna happen that way, I'll find another way.
Appreciate you being, and appreciate your, your comments. Um, but my, my opinion, based on what the planning and zoning, the work they've done and knowing the site myself, seeing the information that's been provided to us. I think all of these concerns are valid. I would also note of our speed traffic study, this was the most busy intersection by almost fifty percent more traffic. And we all know that where the Ballard schools are and where they bring their kids from those months, the traffic is insane. And we have tried to work with the county on some projects associated with speed zones. They will not, they have not entertained any of that, so I find it hard to believe that they'll make it a priority to address that type of issue. In addition to it, so I think the access is also just a really valid issue that's brought up in here, let alone the other planning and zoning concerns. So. Uh, if anybody on the council has additional thoughts or.
Uh, Jeff, my question would just be, we don't have an action item on it. This is a review of this plat, is that correct?
It's to review and either deny or approve.
So we will make counsel.
Okay, we will, we will take a vote.
So I'm making motion, we deny the subdivision.
Second. All right.
I have one comment I'd like to make.
For discussion, yeah.
Since we have legal representation here and, um, one of the items. This is part of my professional background, one of the items here talks about, um. That it would create a spot zoning condition. I, as I understand, Story County does not have zoning out in the rural area. So it's not spot zo- a spot zoning condition. We can say it's an incompatible land use in our opinion, so I'd just like to have that. Out for everybody, zoning has nothing to do with this.
Yes, and I think, I think the zoning comment probably has more to do with as we relate it back to the initial comment about our comprehensive plan. Should our comprehensive plan be executed and those, the annexation occurs in that circumstance? Then it would be a spot zone location in that certain, but you're exactly right until it's annexed, it's not. Thank you for clarifying me.
And in discussion of that, I would say the same thing. This our traffic study shows, um, and and we talked earlier about the traffic problems on. On that same street, um. At the south side and and, uh, I agree, I think that's a disastrous place to have a commercial. Development and to try to turn in and out of there offwind. Um, right, you're gonna, you're gonna have the poor concrete, you're gonna have roofing coming off there, you're gonna have more water going on to those same properties. That already have enormous drainage issues, um. And I don't know if they've, if it's already been vetted to do a septic system in there, but that's, it's ridiculous. You can't get a septic system to drain in a swamp. But, uh, it's not my problem, but this is completely. But uh, it's not my problem, but this is completely incompatible with that area and, and uh. I agree with motion, a hand.
So we've got a motion and we've got a second, I just for the record sake, would like to just do a roll call vote on this if you don't mind. Um, so that we can get everybody's independent vote recorded.
And we better read it so we know.
Certainly. Certainly, the attorney's got you a little queasy, huh? That is professional training. No, we have, we appreciate everybody being here and appreciate you guys being here. Um, so we have a motion and a second to um. Deny the subdivision. The, the plat of survey um, for the potential Dollar General store, so this um, will be a roll call vote. To deny the subdivision for this plat of survey um, for the location that's discussed and noted in the agenda.
Okay, ready, or it's all? May?
Hi.
Erickson?
Hi.
Newman?
Alright.
Conley?
Hi.
What is opposed to? Alright, so uh, that carries unanimously denied unanimously. So next agenda item, um, and, and those of you that were here for that topic, you don't have, we're not offended if you wanna leave now, that's. We're certainly, we're certainly not offended, so don't. It's okay, you don't have to hang around, we do respect you being here.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Apparently we're not that riveting.
Alright, so uh, since that's taken care of, let's move into this approval of entering into expedited administrative order for compliance of consent with the EPA. Um. Mark's team helped us with this too, uh, laying it over here Snyder, uh, do you wanna give the backstory or uh, does it matter really where?
It was from a. Adam, Mark can probably give it a better explanation than I can, but. We got inspection by the EPA in November, and this is basically stating that. We had some violations during construction period that we have to now. Amend or not, take care of this. So basically one, the EPA will periodically do. You know, inspection, plant sampling, they completed that. And then once they did that, uh, uh, they did find actually a relatively small number of. Testing violations and when they come, they go through a fine-tooth comb of every possible thing that they can find and they can comprehensive. And so within that, uh, we've had those conversations uh, with them and basically where they've indicated is. Uh, they would like to see two quarters, which started back in June, so by October first, uh, they would like to see that the. Client sampling, the equipment that's used, make sure that's calibrated, um, trying to get some additional information from gross land on the material. Uh, for the. File solids, uh, and then uh, also look into some of the, the uh, high flows that come into plants. That's just one of their standard checklist items that they would see. Uh, so basically what they're saying is once those items are uh, completed. Uh, they were, we, we've already outlined that in a compliance plan, so they already have the plan. Uh, the, the compliance to get the clock rolling, so that by October first, we can, that we're done, you know, that would be the end of. Of this, if you plan. And so I guess the step would be approve this today, then that kind of officially starts to crack. Uh, for the EPA, uh, but I think there's already a plan to, you know, calibrate the equipment, get the information from gross land and just do a. To do a uh, large flow uh, plan and once those are done, they would just kind of document it, send back. Uh, to the EPA and that would.
So essentially, we're just like you said, uh, taking the action on it, um, putting the signature on it, sending it off so that. Uh, they, we've met their deadline for complying or acknowledging and taking the steps forward.
Like mentioned on that, um, this is on, uh, I think very first page for the letter that they sent to us. The fine-tooth comb that they put through this. It might note that their inspection was in twenty-three, not twenty-four.
I, I highlighted.
Hasn't happened yet, so.
They're not good.
But these are, these are, these aren't unreasonable asks for the record we need to be doing, is that?
No. There really wasn't anything.
No, yeah.
Well, and it really, I mean, it didn't have to do necessarily with the quality of our, what our output is or things like that, right? It simply had to do with pro- uh, process errors or calibration errors that they put in the, in the testing process versus like. What we have down there, what's happening is like, they eat when you hear EPA.
It's not like our.
It's more process related, is my understanding.
It's not like we were sending bad water. In essence, you know, we're dealing with a, what agency they could have done, they literally phone called instead of a five thousand pound. Shit comes and threatens to.
Shut them down, there's always a process.
Why they conceded that, add two quarters, like we don't need to drag this out, that's, this, these are pretty. Type issue, if they come, they're pretty likely to find.
The question for one of the two marks, the compliance stuff, the three compliance, that's just paperwork in the. Calibration, those things you have to do, that, I wanna make sure you agree, that's, those three are easy enough? Okay, and on the four of the rational violations. Uh, those seem like they were close to the standards and you're not worried with the next three, two quarters that went past with the new equipment now run.
Yes and no, so I have the EPA to worry about and I have the D N R locally. I've talked to the local D N R today and they are not concerned at all.
Alright.
So. It's, it, it's a pH issue, just very slightly.
Yep, I know, you're just right at the standard.
Yeah, and until we get rid of our algae issue out in the ponds, we're gonna have a. PH issue.
Okay.
So. I've talked to D N R about our algae issue, that was, that's a whole other, yeah.
So three of the four, you're not concerned about them?
You're right, and, and the other one is, is a seasonal thing, and that's why the D N R is not. Extremely worried at all about it, if it was not a seasonal thing, then, then I think they'd be. It'd probably be having to do some sort of chemical additive or something to get the pH down.
So there's a slim chance that we may actually have ongoing issues after the two quarters?
Uh, a slight, well, no.
Well, by then.
So your.
You're monitoring you for the next two months, or next two quarters, so.
Yeah.
It'll be your hot quarter.
So, but I think with the, hopefully with the D N R talking to my rep from the D N R, her knowing.
Okay.
Those EPA people also, so.
Are the four things they noted, that's something that your testing equipment tested?
As far as calibrations and stuff?
No, the, the things that they monitor, I think they're looking at your records, right?
Uh, they were looking at our calibration records, our pH, I mean, we checked the pH. It's, that's a legit pH, I mean.
Right, that's, I mean, they're, they're looking at your records, not doing your own testing.
Right, so they did their own testing while they're there.
But if we're trending the wrong way, you'll know in advance.
Oh sure.
Yeah, if we need to.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, good, that's what I thought, seemed like this was the fault. Good plan, I just wanted to.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Will be approved, entering into expedited administrative work.
Move a second, all those in favor of approving?
Alright.
All those opposed? Anybody abstain? Fabulous. So we have approval of Amber Junks to the Park and Rec Board, I would just note there is a G after the N before the S.
Yep.
Can we get a motion for that? She has been helping already, she did help a lot with this. All those in favor? All those opposed? Any? We have approval of contract with F E H for bond referendum support and additional design and architectural work. Um. I know you're here Kyra, you've worked on the thing, do you wanna just give us the thirty-second, thirty thousand foot?
Yes.
I know you did.
We have a rural enrichment grant, um, which we are using to further design work with F E H. On the community center and library plans, we're intending to um, have them in here shortly. To re- retool the plans a little bit, downsize the plan a little bit, so it's not as expensive. Because of the last four years, the, the construction costs have just skyrocketed. Um, and so. Their team will begin in the next couple of weeks to do that and sort of community input um, on those. We do want some full city hall into the plans. Um, so that it will be a three-function building, uh, community center, city hall and. Uh, library, um, and so those grant monies, which it was a twenty thousand dollar grant. Um, plus a ten thousand dollar city match will get us to a point where we have a slightly smaller. Um, and slightly more detailed plan, elevations. Um, engineering and better costing, so we really have a better idea of what it really is gonna cost instead of just sort of broad sweeping. Per square foot kinds of costs, so.
Accurate or better meaning cheaper, or both?
Uh, we hope it's cheaper, but I don't, we can't make any promises that way, it's just, when we started this process, uh, this was supposed to be a five point four million dollar. And it's not that anymore, yeah, and so we're trying to listen to feedback that we've gotten from people. One of the comments that we got somewhere along the way was, what about city hall in there? And I thought, that, you know, that's a good idea. That gets someone, you know, ha- having an office there means community center has a con- a sort of contact with the community facility. That, that makes sense, and then maybe this building becomes available for, for the business to help with it. That's, so.
And I would just note that there was an expiration on this, so we're utilizing this uh, timely and it was a free twenty thousand dollars if you will, through the grant writing process. Um, the intent is to give it another go on, on November's ballot, so. We use this or lose this, and so the choice was to use it.
Yes.
And that's what we're approving.
Yes, our plan is to um, take our revisioned design. Um, and work with F E H to have some community meetings, get a survey out to community members. Um, to try and get more information out there and put it on the bond one more time. Um, this November, we have failed it two times before by. Less than twenty votes, um, both times, something like that, um, so it's. It's close to passing, but it hasn't, and so one way or the other, with this being a presidential election where. Lots of people will be voting, more than might be technical, we will at least have. Information that gives us a better perspective on what the will of the community is, and um, so. We feel like we've put a lot of time and energy into this project, we think it will be good for the city. Um, a good way to make Slater an appealing place for people to live and work. Um, and so we wanna see that through, it's not uncommon for a bond to take several times to pass. I have been in education my whole life, and this happens in the middle of spring, so I haven't done. Where it takes three or four bond issues, votes before something like that, I believe that even happened here, there's government elementary school. Um, it took a lot, it took a lot of votes to get that to pass, so. Um, so anyway, um, we're gonna try and get a lot more information out of spending and see if we can help the community members as well. Cause we want people to have their questions answered and we want them to. Feel like this is something that will be good for the community and if they don't feel that way, we can still be friends at the end of the day, but um. At least that we're having the conversation.
Thank you for the overview, thank you for being here. Nope, it's okay.
I make motion we approve.
I'll second that.
We've got a second at the same time as the first, we got the first from Joel, the second from Sean, all those in favor? Opposed? No extensions. Okay, we will move to.
You're here just for that. Don't want you guys still left out either.
Resolution forty, resolution uh, forty-four, end of year fiscal year, twenty twenty-four transfer. Jen, can you give us? I think it's straightforward, but can you just give us?
So our local option sales tax comes in just as that, and the only way you can legally spend it is to transfer it into general funds. That is uh, two hundred and thirty-five thousand for this year. And then we have some general fund money that we want to clean up and get moved into our community center library project funds. Um, and currently, that's, that's some dollars that was allocated in previous fiscal years, twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. Um, that was committed. Um, for a total of a hundred and eighty thousand to move into the project fund.
For clarity, the hundred and eighty grand for the C T L, the community center library. That's the money that the city owns and will stay in a city account.
Correct.
Uh, just a separate account for the city, is that correct?
Yeah, they're, they're, yeah.
That was the budget money left over in fiscal years, yeah.
Uh, there was an email circulated that we addressed the money that we're gonna move to the friend.
We are not moving money to the friends, the auditor does not approve of that.
There was a, uh, we tried to clarify, so the auditors had a follow-up and.
Once money falls into city. Bank accounts, it is city dollars, it is considered city dollars, no matter where it came from.
So even though we probably inadvertently co-mangled those funds.
They become city dollars.
So I think the thing that's important there and that I wanna make sure we get done and, and we've talked about this and we have the account, uh, the. The auditor's opinion now, which I can respect, I did think there was, I think, I, I did feel like it was convoluted and maybe. I just need to have the conversation with him to understand it better, but. He, in his email, he made it sound like that the city can't make a donation to something, and I just wanna make sure he knows, we're not really making a donation. We're taking money that was donated by private tech, private people earmarked for this project. That we didn't have an account for at this time, does that make a difference? But ultimately, if the answer still is, hey, you can't leave that money, then from my perspective. It would be nice to have a very clear. I know the library group has kept a good record of like, who donated what, where's the money at, but from our perspective to get it. Into that account and have that figure, so we know.
All in the project fund, yeah.
Yeah, and, and separate it out so that it isn't, you know, co-mingle maybe, and, and maybe it's not, and it's just a comprehension thing, but I. I do think that is something we really need to get sorted out. Because should the bond pass, we need, we're gonna need to be able to activate it, but on the alternative, should the bond not pass. What obligations and what scenarios are we in that we now have private donations? That were for that project and how do we handle that situation? That one can, that one, the latter concerns me more than if the project goes through, it's pretty clean cut, but if it doesn't go through and things pivot. The handling of those funds, I think will be a delicate step that we should be in front of versus reactive to. Cause I mean, any thoughts or? Comments there, guys?
If, after you talk to the auditor, if we can't move it to the friends, I think we need to have a second conversation, cause there's another chunk of money above this. That as you said, whether we put it in a separate account, somehow we need to get that.
Designated.
So we don't think that's.
Yeah. Yeah, and how much, or whatever, and I, I don't know, the dollar amount we're talking is uh, one fifty. A hundred and fifty thousand maybe, or a little more, somewhere in there. Um, I'm just looking at the sheet, I have the spreadsheet that's updated here, so seventy-five thousand from community club, we had twenty thousand that came in from a rural enrichment grant. Which we're gonna utilize here, so that's. Um, that is accounted for in here, so that doesn't really count, we had twenty-seven from Gather, we have twenty-three gather, gather. Um. Which I think the twenty-three gather got to the account, but twenty-two gather and some various ones, so. I just Snyder also, since Mark's here, that it looks like they made a donation as well, and absolute, so. I think it's imperative we get that sorted out and know exactly where that is and how much that is in this process as we update records. Does that sound fair? Yeah, cool. With that said, is there any other questions on resolution forty-four?
You already have one.
I don't think I've received a motion yet.
I'll circle.
Okay, I'm gonna throw a discussion thought in here, getting, so the money's now. Tax option, it just goes into our general fund. But that money has no, we have no planned usage at the moment.
Yeah, when we budgeted, we budgeted.
Okay, thank you, we've got both motions, so all those um, in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Anybody abstain? Perfect, uh, so let's move. No, I'm just, my thought, no, my thought was, hey, we better get this in I P, cause I wanna make interest money, if that's the case. I wanna be making money on the money that's not being utilized, um, you know. Although we could figure out how to. Although we could figure out how to spend it, right? I mean, we all have those projects. Sewer easement receivers light industrial. Is this for an update?
Yeah, kind of where we're at.
Uh, Jason's not here, so I'll just update everybody on kind of some of the conversations that have been going on. He did leave. Uh, we have been having some conversations with them. I had another touch point with them today. We're, the easement as drawn is basically taking a third of Iowa Plains property. That it will be permanent easement. There were some questions around what can we put on that? Can we, how do we utilize that? This is deeper. It comes out to about a third of an acre.
Yeah, a third of the problem.
Right.
Oh, did I say a third of the property? To clarify, a third of the acre, a third of the, thank you very much. It is a third of an acre. Across the back property fifteen foot, the whole length of that property. Thank you for clarifying. That's a big difference. The question kind of, they currently have a practice where they stack their heavy barricades on the backside of the property, close to the property line. As we put a sewer line down the property line, can we put barricades on there? My understanding today from talking to Jason and Clint is it's like a twelve by twelve area and the weight of those barriers stacked is ninety thousand pounds. How close can those be to the sewer line? What does that then make not usable for their process flow and the way they work? So we were talking with them, discussing how we could come to an amicable agreement. In our due diligence, we also asked the engineer, can we move the sewer line south into the developer's property? That answer was yes, and that figure was a much lower figure than what we were discussing. I have let Iowa Plains know that and said, hey, this is where the city can do it for, and it's a fraction of what we were talking. Would, do you want to meet us here? Because I think it's in all of our agreement and best interest for the future of Slater to have that on the property line. For the expansion of them joining our sewer, because they're not on city sewer. So I had a conversation with them today. There's two questions that they want answered. Um, the first question was related to the weight stacking and how close we can stack that. Um, and then. The. Question I have written down.
Deep enough, sewer would be out there.
Uh, let's say about twelve to fourteen.
That's what we were thinking.
You know, somewhere in that range. That ninety thousand pounds is spread out over what is?
Twelve by twelve.
Every twelve by twelve is, yeah.
Ninety thousand pounds. They're stacking them currently about five feet off the property line, so I think it's really just an engineer clarification. You know, can you stack ninety thousand pounds five feet off of a sewer that's twelve feet in the ground based on how it's compact?
I, I don't know that. It's twelve foot deep. Uh, weight spread, it's not like a point.
Right.
Weight. Spreads the load over that twelve feet of.
Yeah, it's probably an equation to figure that a little bit, so. Yeah.
Well, yeah, well, the vehicles drive over utilities all the time.
And that was. Which is, I think, is, it's, it's. That would be if it's sitting there and staying there is maybe worse than if it's just passing over. So that's just the clarification we need, because we've already vetted that a heavy truck crossing over it. Regular traffic of heavy trucks over it, not a concern, but when you get stagnant wait, sitting in one spot for a long period of time. Does that change it? So we need to verify that. They seem amicable to meet us where we're talking and in the ballpark of where we're talking. They obviously have to move ninety thousand pounds times however many stacks they have to make the easement accessible. So they do have late labor and manpower in it. So I told them if they can get us in the ballpark, I think we're amicable to respecting their labor they have to put into it. And in the best interest of the growth.
If you drop the curve tomorrow, so I can ask them.
Yeah, perfect. If you'll just ask, if we get that question answered, then we should be set to go, to go forward. So that's where we're at. I hope to have that. Um, I hope to have that done at the end of this week and and I told them that timeline. And then the other thing uh, with that is. I did, in, while you were out, I talked to Brad, uh, the Keller. They've confirmed in which they, it sounds like they confirmed at the regular construction meeting that I missed or didn't know about. They will not be leaving Slater. That was a concern for a little bit of easements. They have enough work that they can go to the. The water connection if they need to next and then to the sewer or mark and then we'll work that out with them and. They could go there, yeah. So it's just that one easement that we're waiting on, hey?
Yeah.
So hopefully this week we'll have that done and we'll keep that progressing. I think things are going pretty good for them.
Yeah.
It seems to have been pretty smooth, minus maybe hitting something, so. Um, that's good news. So that's the update on there. Anybody anything else on that? Okay, so the discussion and possible approval of proposal for Midwest Technologies for cameras at Pool Park City Hall. Jen, I think you've kind of been the point person on this.
Yeah, in getting the pool up and running this year, we went to turn the cameras on and one of them is, is, let's. Uh, one of it is not functioning, one of the, one of the four cameras we have down there. Um, it is. About ten years old. Um, it's not replaceable in the. It's not replaceable at this point in time, so just. Yeah, not, not great, not great. Um, so we just asked them to give us a quote for what it would be to upgrade the system and add more cameras. Um, uh, there's two options there, either sixteen camera system or a thirty-two camera system. The new system would actually be located at city hall. The new recording would be available at city hall, which opens up the idea of, do you want cameras at city hall? Do you want cameras at public works? Cause they could be added as well. Do we want cameras in Grim Park?
Cameras access power, amazing. Um, so I guess. How many cameras are, have been at the pool historically? Do we know that?
Right now, there's four.
And so with one not working, we have three.
Yeah.
And we have the pool, we put the pool, the cameras in at the pool for safety reasons essentially, or vandalism, or or what triggered it? We need to have cameras at the pool.
Um, safety vandalism, um, theft.
And that's a higher risk location than our others.
The pool?
Yeah.
Uh, the library has cameras as well for safety reasons and security reasons. Yeah, uh, well, that gets jumped on a regular basis, so.
Have we ever acted on what we've seen on the?
We have, we have fired employees. We have removed patrons. We have, yeah.
Okay, right.
Um.
We have caught people that have broken into the building.
Okay.
So.
Are these, are these hardwired?
Um.
Are they?
Both. They'd be wifi, there'd be wifi portion of it and hardware or other. So. Guess it depends on how big you, how big, how big you want to go.
How soon would this happen?
Um, they could install them in a couple of weeks.
Getting close to the end of pool season. This, Mark, I'm gonna ask you, since you brought us new to one public works, we don't know the places. Should we try to do this now or should we have a more comprehensive plan? I don't know if you want to.
Well, then we don't have, this was just the first proposal and I mean, if there's other, other bids out there and stuff too, we could go for other bids. I just. One of the council's opinion is where you want to go.
Yeah, I just sent you over the.
Yeah.
The question of.
Yeah.
If we can elsewhere and make that through before we.
Yeah, absolutely.
We, if it was, you know, maybe tomorrow, then maybe it's a different story, but if the season is mostly over. Maybe it's worth making sure we have a plan for Slater rather than just.
Yeah.
So either just for the pool.
No, it wouldn't be. If you went, you know, if you have, even if you just. Yeah, if you did thirty-two pure bathrooms, yeah. No, it wouldn't be just the pool. Sixteen cameras would already expand you into the park and possibly the public works. Thirty-two cameras would get you up to city hall and, you know, maybe have cameras down Main Street. Whatever, whatever you want.
I was gonna, my next question.
No, they've identified, well, there's four for sure. You'd want to stay at the pool, the, the, yeah.
I, I would, this, this is my thought on this. I think it's great. I think the security side is great. I'd like to be a little more com- go ahead, Jen. Hi? A camera at EMS?
I look really good on my.
Okay, for protection. Okay, I would like to, and maybe Chad can be a part of this. I would like there to be a little group that's kind of identifying and bringing us a recommendation for locations. Before we decide thirty-two sixteen, I mean, thirty-two's a no-brainer based on the cost difference.
Yeah.
But I just think, I think we should vet that out a little bit more about what, what are we talking about here? Because who's going to monitor, um? Uh, what are we using, you know, just I think locations, there's a lot more to this, giving him, you know, eleven thousand bucks. But I, I'm supportive of cameras and monitoring and those things, especially at our pool and those things, but I. It'd be nice to have a plan about comprehensive, what, what's important, why, where would the cameras go and have that.
What we do behind it.
I have more of a detailed plan from a, maybe a subcommittee working group, whatever. I don't care if Jen wants to run with that, with, you know, somebody. Uh, that would be my opinion, so I'd prefer to table it.
Well, but, right, and, and is this, this is one company, one business?
Yeah, absolutely. No, it's just I wanted you guys' idea of, this is, this is the ballpark price. Do you want to run with something like this? Do you? Do you not care? Do we just stay with the three cameras that are functioning? Where, where do you want to go?
You have problems on Main Street, I think.
We, we have.
I think the other thing too is if you're gonna do something like this and maybe you talk to the county sheriff as well, if you're gonna do that type of stuff, because they have other. There's a system out there called flock right now, which flock is what you wanted. Um, when we talked about speed cameras, which is. They used flock up on highway thirty when Tyson's got broke into and all the guns got stolen. They caught the guys on flock and flock essentially. Tracks every single car ingress and egress, records, timestamp, everything to know all those movements. So, and the sheriff has done some of that and has talked about expanding that program throughout the county. So, you know, maybe flock is a better option and maybe that's that. And maybe one of these solar paneled Arlo. Six hundred dollar systems for the pool that goes into the cloud is.
Good enough.
Good enough for what we need. I do think we should do some more research.
Yep.
So I, I would look for a motion from somebody that maybe wants to table this with further research. As long as it, that's sorry, as long as it, you don't think there's a impending concern at the swimming pool.
Nah, not with the three cameras still working. We have three cameras still working, we, you know.
Cool.
Make a motion, we table this and set it subcommittee to figure out what we need. But continue to look at cameras for towns.
Uh, who, who would like to participate in that?
Could I be a person?
No.
But I, um, I mean, I could give you a list of where I think I would want cameras for me.
Yeah.
For us.
That'd be great.
Chad, would you? Chad, Mark and Jen will figure out some locations for proposal or discussion.
And you can have this up to me, but I don't, I just want to give you what I.
That's fine. That's fine.
I have zero expertise, so I'm not going to volunteer.
Yeah, but just run with Chad, uh, Jen. We got Mark here for locations and and we can use the pool staff too, but I, I think it's probably predetermined at the pool, but other locations. And then if anybody else in the community wants to participate, you're welcome to.
Or do you think that the library would be in on this or they on their own?
They have their own right now, but it might be a consideration to, theirs is, theirs is about as. Yours is about as old as ours, it's like ten years old.
It would seem like we should.
What's a DVR? All right, so we, we had a first and a second. We had a motion from Sean, we seconded from Ken. And then we're gonna go with all those in favor of tabling for further research in this subcommittee.
All right.
Opposed? Anybody staying? Nope, okay. We are moving down the list here to, okay, discussion of possible approval, uh, proposal from G Works for updating accounting software. Jen and Craig have sat on in this. I also ironically had a connection from an old. College connection that is the district or director of sales for the same G Works company. Tech company based out of Omaha. They purchased the software the city uses today called Simple City. He told me directly, and I think Jen and Craig told us, that product is going to sunset and go away. Uh, they will, you know, end of life, he called it, that product. They have not set a firm date yet. They've been kind of. Hurting the flock to this new product, G Works, which is kind of a build on to that. So this is coming down the pipeline to us, uh, whether we want it, don't want it, whatever. Jen provided some nice information here. The only other thought I have before, uh, Jen and Craig. He did tell me that if we push back, we can get rid of that implementation, implementation cost. They will. Existing simply, Simple City, they will get rid of the implementation, implementation cost of three grand. I, I'm very confident we can get that removed. So we can save three grand off what was presented. Um, we just need to push, push back and ask for that to go away.
So just as a perspective, our current. Um, annual cost is five thousand four hundred dollars, so that would be doubling our, uh. Doubling our, our annual cost. Um, I did some super quick figures just in, oh, water billing that people pay. By credit card would save approximately five hours a month. This additional costs would need fifteen hours of savings. To make it cost effective. Uh, granted, that's only, that's only. In the water bills be paid by credit card. We're also going to save time through. Um, cause it'll, cause we won't be printing as many water bills. We won't be sorting, we won't be stamping, we'll save, be saving paper. Um, people will have better access. They will be able to look up their account online.
There'll be a customer citizen portal.
Yeah.
They'll all have unique logins. They can pay online that way. They can see their bill online that way. They have functionality to do what they call the three-one-one information deal where. Uh, somebody mentioned something here tonight about it, uh, something that was a problem that needed fixed or something. They could submit an online, uh, essentially an online ticket. That then could be a work order in theory. There's phases to this, so this first phase that we're getting ready is front desk, considered the front desk that matches exactly what we have. I think in the long run, what they can do capability wise is, um, they can do electronic time cards. They can shift everybody to where they gotta. Do their time electronically and then that time card feeds in to where it needs to be. We can set up the toads and the departments. For those, you know, Jen goes through every individual time card every single week and tries to read it and allocate it where it needs to be. The guys take the time to write that down. That could go a hundred percent electronic. Then what it would do is allocate to each individual bucket the right way with red hours, so that would be an advantage down the road from time saving.
Great. That's time consuming.
It can, I think, I don't think it can issue pool passes, but it can. Do the transaction. He gave me some recommendations on some other software to look at on that. That's a big time suck. But it can also do like our asset management as broad as, and I know there's some technology maybe we have, but. Like, uh, where's our manholes? Where's our water turnoffs? Where's our lines run?
We have all that.
Yeah, and at some point, it could be all inside of this G Works as well electronically. So there's time and energy and all that mapping to it, so it's a. It's a plan. That would be a second phase that we would kind of add on to this down the road potentially. Um, and be able to add some of those services.
I have any idea what, the, the, it's a thousand nine hundred a year. Sounds like a lot to use software. I have no idea how that compares to.
We're paying fifty-four hundred a year now.
You're stuck to like other companies.
Yeah, and, and same question is, as the cameras, are we, we have bids from other companies or, I mean, I'm assuming it's other companies. Or some stuff is still proprietary towards city. I, uh, running, maybe that's what this is.
It is.
I think this is not monopolized, but there's a couple other technologies Tyler Tech he recommend, recommended, which is like your major metropolitan cities would use. And then there's this Cassell or something that some would use, but he said. They're in your, they're in your towns that are, you know. Seventy-five hundred, five thousand and less is what this software is kind of designed and built for. They're not selling to Akeny Iowa. And Akeny's not buying from them. He did tell me that because I asked that question too, Ken. I think the other thing to point out that's important is currently we use physical server backup, right? This would move to AWS, Amazon's cloud base. So some of your cost is the guaranteed security of your data. That process as well.
Two concerns, like I said on Jen's call with Sawyer.
Yeah.
Um, two concerns I had was, I don't want to be the first one, so there's some going online now, so I'd want to vet, or they happy. Otherwise, we better look at these other ones. Uh, and two. Uh, Sawyer said, we only got two years of our old records put on this. I would want to get a quote, so instead of having to have, okay, all of our old stuffs on Simple City, we have to. I'd want to get a quote up on the deck to get all of our old records migrated to the new system instead of saying. Oh, yeah, there's another system, that's what I'll work for that and I've done that and hated.
I understood from my conversation, so we can clarify that since we're on Simple City, the data migration would go through our lifetime in Simple City. So I'll, I, we can clarify that.
They would definitely do it for two years and I said, well, for. They would definitely do it for two years, and I said, well, for record keeping, the state requires five, and so.
I just wanna say, what's it cost you to haul?
And I was talking to Sawyer's boss, so I'll, I'll ask him like, I think we can try and negotiate a little bit. This is, you approve something like this. You get onboarded in September. We wait. We get onboarded, we can kick this can, we can look at alternatives, we can do all those things. But their onboarding class in September will fill up, so we either do, you know, we do some quick research and we try to get it done sooner than later. Otherwise, you go to the next onboarding class, which will be January, it sounds like. At some point, they're gonna come out with a date that says, this is where Simple City's dead, and now you're just getting funneled into the last class. Maybe we're okay with that. I, I don't know, but just so. It's clear.
I got the impression once we did it, it would, we would be four weeks out is all. I didn't know there was a class.
I think you put in your September, I think you, I think you put on it something with, um, yeah. Additionally, we are currently looking at September as the closest upgrade implementation date. I think there's an influence and. Implementation process where they bring in everybody else implementing. And they take you through.
That becomes sort of a. Chicken or the egg thing in terms of, you know, if we're, if we're in the first class in September, then we're literally. One of the first ones on board with this system and we don't.
They already have a class.
They already, yeah, they, they have about sixty cities already doing the onboarding process.
Right, I just wanna wait till most city is done before we commit.
And, and so the alternative is you wait, you can wait till that and commit later. Um. They're gonna be later getting onboarding onto it. You could do some research on some competitors. I mean, there's, there's nothing wrong with that, but my understanding, it sounds like, is like. You have three choices. You have this choice that's in your range, you have this choice that's gonna cater to big metropolitans, you can have that technology. Um, and there's one other one that's more of a not in the state of Iowa's actively. It sounds like, and he told me, I think they have. I don't know. They have, um. Nine hundred and fifties, four hundred, there's nine hundred and fifty cities in the state of Iowa, Simple City is four hundred and fifty of those cities. And they've purchased Simple City, so. They're gonna try to move four hundred and fifty of them.
What's your preference?
I think upgrading is, is. Is definitely the way to go.
With this system and everything. Is your one using it every day?
It, like, like Taylor said, there's not a lot of options out there for city accounting systems.
You gotta keep in mind.
And I've heard, and I've always heard positive things about. This was, I've never used a different system, so I don't know.
Yeah.
Um, but some of the experts who.
To the same system.
Yeah, this is, yeah.
Yes and no, I mean, so. When they buy a software company, they don't use, they don't do anything the same as what that software company did that they bought because they've got their own proprietary stuff. Other than people who are in software companies, everybody hates their software. So, don't expect love, which you're gonna get, sorry, but that's my experience, I don't know.
This is gonna be revolutionary. This is water billing revolutionary right here.
You know, you love your, your company's software.
I like our software a lot. I have had different experiences.
I actually like.
My software is. I, I, my software's changed my work and day flow. I think sometimes it's the adapt. This is the thing too, that I think is important. Anytime you buy technology.
Yeah.
You've gotta be willing to adapt and change the way you do things and use the technology, because.
Right.
Saying the software stinks is not, that may not be fair in instances where it stinks because I don't even use it the way I was trained and supposed to use it. I'm trying to create workarounds all the time.
All fair.
We do have to, we will, and that'll be the hardest part for Jen only working on.
Growing hard is that, that changeover is, is always excruciating.
It's hard. So, tech, tech companies move fast, right?
Yeah.
It's outdated by the time you get on, you get comfortable. So, but this is their flagship product. And just so you know, they are, they are owned by private equity. So I did ask that question, just like all these companies, there's private equity money in it, so. We're probably not gonna be able to find somebody that's not, because if I don't have the capital, just keep up with the technology.
The one plus, maybe we didn't talk about, by moving the cloud, we've got really good security. And our uptime should be phenomenal. And it should be automated updates instead of probably now you get a, a disk or jumping every now and then.
An email.
An email with a download or something.
This should be a hundred percent automated instead of a manual process that she has now.
And, and Jen has voiced, it's very, very hard to work on the software outside of this building. That should change with this upgrade. She should be able to go in via the cloud system on a la- on her laptop that she has to access it wherever. People could do that in theory.
Probably you can't do.
Yeah, I don't think we really have a choice. I think you need to do it.
And I'm not concerned, oh, I'd like Jen to talk to some other people like her and say, that's my only reservation.
I, yeah, I would, I would take a motion to approve this and to move forward with. The request of waiving. The three thousand and asking for longer record retention, so I would be looking for. The, the broader record migration with the three thousand dollars waived. That we'll ask that, but have approval to move forward if we can get those two things.
I have concerns about the longer record keeping, depending on what the cost structure is then.
Yeah, I'd like to know the cost.
Yes.
Absolutely have to know the cost before.
Then let's table, then let's table it, make that decision on July eighth.
How often do you access those old records? Yeah, you have that. You have to, right, you have to have them, but how often do you access?
I think you wanna move off of that old software platform before they end of life it, because then they probably quit doing maintenance and stuff, so we better have in this spot where we feel like we can access it. The one or two times we need to. So let's, so then let's change the motion to a table until the eighth of July, pending the answer on those two things.
I'll make that motion.
Can I have a second? All those in favor? Those abstain? Larry's, we have one last item here, discussion and possible approval of facade grant. Uh, that second there was, uh, Sue was first, second was Craig. Uh, we have the discussion of possible approval of facade grant. I see Mandy's here, hanging on for the last item. Last straw, the facade grant for three oh one Main Street. Everybody's noticed something's going on at Larry's, right? Um, Mandy, do you wanna just give a high level there? We're concerned about some brick. Mandy and I talked about this and I asked about this grant.
So they have to put in some steel. And, you know, they thought it would be easy, they thought they were just gonna take out some brick, put new brick in and. And be done, and they got, and then you don't, you know, have to put in and. So that's why it's still sitting like it is. And you have to bring, and you find out your brain, an engineer, and the engineer has a set plan. It can't just be, it has to be architectural engineer. Can't just be.
It's structural now, more so than just facade, you know, just brick on the face, right?
Yeah, the, the.
The lintel is, is a structural piece, has to be updated. And the company that came referred you guys to, and they've brought engineers that have been there and they're looking at it.
The engineer came last year, they were waiting for his. Well, and they sent me, they, they didn't give me a cost, they gave me a hundred and fifty-two dollar per hour.
For the engineer, yeah. So essentially what this is, um, this is a facade grant. If the city of Slater approves the facade grant, up to ten thousand dollars, the county will match up to ten thousand dollars.
So, so it's really a story county grant, um, it's twenty percent of whatever the total project is. Up to ten thousand dollars from the city and ten thousand dollars from the county. So it's still, it's twenty percent. It's, it's something though, so, you know. Larry's put a lot of money into that building. We want, we wanna help him.
That's twenty percent of these or twenty percent of them? Let's say it's only ten percent of these.
In theory, I guess, we can verify that.
Yeah, we'll, I'll have to verify that.
Yeah, but it's up to twenty thousand dollars.
Dollars, ten thousand from city, ten thousand.
And so it's based, so. Up, did you say, so up to twenty percent? So to get twenty thousand, it's gotta be a hundred thousand dollar facade. To get to the twenty. So, okay. So twenty percent of whatever your total cost is in theory, and we'll verify that exact number. But up to ten per city.
You gotta hook a lot more than we do, but you don't get the whole twenty cent.
Yeah. You don't want twenty thousand. That's good. I didn't know it was up to the twenty percent. I thought it was.
It is twenty percent up to ten thousand dollars. It is twenty percent.
It maxes out at twenty percent of the total cost.
It maxes out at. Ten thousand dollars each.
Maxes out at twenty thousand.
Yeah.
It is twenty percent.
But the only maybe twenty percent of the cost, yeah, thank you. I'd like to see that written down.
We look for a motion to approve this.
I'd look for a motion to approve this. Sean with the first, Joel with the second. I've never seen somebody wanna get out of here more. Um, all those in favor? Opposed? Anybody abstain? All right, uh, with that said, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
John, we were trying to let you out.
You're slowing the trigger on that one.
I wanna get out.
You're so fast on that one, and then you're not, come on. We got a first and we got a second from Sue. All those in favor of adjourning, it is eight twenty-four. Opposed? All right, everybody's abstaining. Thank you. Hi, Jada. Just one second.